Sure, good evening, welcome to a meeting of the Situate zoning board of appeals. First application this evening is of Kevin and Karen Hunter of in Northe Farm Road in Situate. Their application is for a special permit slash finding to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling in 52 Lotus Place in Situate. And relevant to that application, we have correspondence from their attorney. Yeah, it's in here somewhere. They're represented now by attorney Jeff Leese of Hornberger, Leese &amp; Harris. And they are drawing up plans which are not yet ready and they're requesting a continuance to the May 16 hearing of the zoning board. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Next application is for 14-16 Old Country Way Situate LLC. They're requesting a special permit under section 820, 950.2d, section 520, and Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 6, to alter the pre-existing non-conforming uses activities occurring within the non-disturbance buffer zone and relating to the maximum impervious surface at 14-16 Old Country Way in Situate. And they also have requested a continuance. Their engineer and land surveyor, Paul Maravito, who would be assisting them in making the presentation are, Mr. Maravito is out of town and not able to be here, so they've requested a continuance also to May 16, 2019.
Make a motion to continue this application to May 16, 2019.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Next up is Mr. Richard Walden of 28 Cherry Lane requesting a special permit finding for the property of 36 Bailey's Causeway in Situate in accordance with Mass, excuse me, Situate zoning by law section 470.6 and 810.2, 48, Section 6, to raise and reconstruct pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling in 36 Bailey's Causeway. And there's an identical application for the property in the rear which is in 36 R. Bailey's Causeway seeking the identical relief. Representing the applicant this evening is...
It's Jeff, yeah. Are you doing Bailey's Causeway?
I am.
The other two, the first, yeah, the first two applications were continued, so.
Here we are, glad I got here.
I just thought I was mad, I should have come there.
Our representative on time this evening is?
Jeff Assett.
I'm sorry, Jeff?
Jeff Assett.
Okay. And essentially, what is he doing here for?
He's a physical renovation project for a home at 36 Bailey's Causeway. And he's seeking a special permit and a finding under sections 470.6 and 810.2. And...
Second?
The lot is non-conforming with respect to the area of front yard to be in possession. And the existing home that was built in 1930 is non-conforming with respect to the front yard setback. And the property is also going to be flood-protected, large protection district. So the proposed new home, compared to the previous, is consistent with the neighborhood. It's going to be only a two-bedroom home because it's restricted by the septic system. And the new home is not creating any new non-conformities nor does it increase any existing non-conformities. The front yard will be the same as existing at about 13 feet and the side and rear yard too. And also the house will be brought into compliance in terms of the theme of construction. We'll go for construction where the floodway.
Alright, Tom? So you're saying it's in the theme of flood zone or not in the Situate flood zone?
It is in both.
It's irrelevant to the application, I'm just curious, are you going to have a shared septic system?
No, separate.
Two separate, two-bedroom systems?
Yeah, exactly.
They back up to each other?
One of them is going to be right here and then on the rear lot it's right behind it. So if I do it here, it's one of the areas that's separate.
I was looking at the assessor's field card, I see that your client has owned the property for close to 40 years. They bought it back in the late seventies. And it's funny, because I always wondered, like, what are the dealers with that property? Because they're so out of character with the neighborhood. Everyone's got more substantial homes and these were essentially two cottages that were just never approved. So I think that what you're proposing to do is going to be in character with the neighborhood. I'm curious if anybody, are there any neighbors here that, there you go, we'll get to you in a second, I'd be curious to hear what they have to think. I would guess, obviously we haven't seen the plans, but I would guess bringing the homes into compliance, into flood compliance and then into building code compliance will be a vast improvement for the neighborhood. You know, it may impact a couple of folks with, terms of their views may be impacted, but that's not something that concerns me in terms of the steering that we apply.
Not sure I have anything else to add.
Bob?
No, not necessarily. I'm a little curious, what's the, the access to this lot? Birch Lane is not developed, as I understand, right, as a paper street through this area?
Right. The access currently is a gravel driveway coming off of Bailey's Causeway to 36 and then it continues on to 36 rear. And that's going to remain essentially unchanged.
And so is this a case of two buildings, two houses on one lot pre-existing in that situation?
No, the two lots were actually created a number of years ago as an 81 house subdivision, where there are two houses that predate it.
And you've got a common driveway? I assume you've got a common driveway special permit?
Well, the common driveway predates actually a common driveway requirement. Right now they're under the same ownership. If, I think if you want to sell one of your lots, you have to make a form of common driveway.
Yeah, here's my concern, Jeff, and I know Richie's a firefighter or was a firefighter, I don't know if he still is, but the concern would be for safety access, especially given its location in a floodplain. Somebody needs to rescue the people of the back house. I wouldn't want the emergency responders getting bogged down in a substandard poorly-built common driveway because Richie was trying to save a couple of bucks and not improve the driveway. So I'd want to see or to have from you some sort of assurances that that driveway would be improved for access. And again, because of its location and because of the concerns with it being in a floodplain, that's going to invite emergency responders. What's that expression in the law, that the hazard invites the emergency response or something?
I don't think I'm familiar with that expression.
Yeah, it's a maxim.
I just, so for my own clarification, what would, in your opinion, constitute a sufficiently improved driveway?
Some sort of either, an impervious surface or something that's like those, you know, those permeable pavers versus just...
I'm not sure we have the ability to tell someone to pave their driveway or something else, especially their driveway that already exists and already services two homes and two separate lots.
I don't disagree that it's outside the scope of our...
Great power.
Our, the power of the zoning act to...
Right.
...to not relieve. However, given the fact that they're seeking relief, it would be reassuring to me to hear the applicant make the representation. But yeah, that's, this is our plan, that's what we're going to do.
So I think I can address that. So the gravel driveway on the left-hand side is going to remain, I mean, it'd be difficult to get that PDA to really do much better than right next to the white line with as hard as four consummation of burn it. But on the right-hand side, the septic system will be reconnected with the empty product of, which would be for, just for the board of health regulations. And the intent of that would be that you could park on top of the home. I think that's, they're going to be designed that way. Because I think, to get back to your point, the emergency would be where you have your driveways underwater, flood. Well, this would be an area coming down the hill from Bailey's Causeway, giving access both ice and water area that's now three feet higher in elevation.
Alright. Anyone from the audience have anything to ask or add? If you could just give us your name and your address?
Sure, Jamie Davidson.
Hi, Jamie.
34 Bailey's Causeway, which is directly inside 36.
Sure, what side are you on? Just because we're looking at the right, the right-hand side?
The left.
Where?
I guess the left side is.
The left, the other side.
You're a bunch of fish, there you go.
I live at 32 Bailey's Causeway, which is next door to 34, sort of in view of the one in the front. So I think most of my questions were keen to kind of pull, so I don't know if you, do I tell my questions on the first property or, is this 36 in the front?
Yeah, 36, Bailey's Causeway, yeah.
Okay, so I have more questions really about the back. And when you were talking about the drive, you were saying the driveway will still remain there. And then did you say something about a second driveway or second access?
Yeah, we really can't improve right next to the white line, but the septic has to be, has to be balanced up on this side.
Okay.
And we are able to design that in such a way you could or haven't talked about.
You could. And are you able to drive into the septic?
You guys.
Not every septic system?
Okay.
They can be specifically designed so they can get.
Okay, because I have one that you can't.
Yeah, yeah, don't try.
My project at 34 is, I'm having a construction project, I have a recent rebuild going on, so I'm careful not to, I've had them...
Were you in front of us?
I was, but not, not you guys prior, prior, actually, 2017, maybe. So in looking at maybe this particular plot, a brand that is maybe almost 7,900 square feet, and not all of this lot is usable because of the marshland. And I'm very familiar with old properties and how much they are prone to flooding and how much they're prone to keeping the water, whether it rains or whether there's a high tide or whether there's a storm. So I would just kind of make the point, this travel, this driveway over here is, is a hazard because they often have to evacuate here and they often have to leave, make arrangements to put their cars somewhere else. And if they are in the house and the tide comes, they do have to be rescued. So I understand with the new elevation that will eliminate that, but then I don't know how you can get in and out of the house with that type of elevation and also the drive access. You wouldn't be able to move it over to the town parking lot either because that's in the same situation. So when you have this front lot, which is much smaller and not so much buildable, I know on here that it says the square footage of the house is proposed at 2,777 square feet. Presently it's 640 square feet. It says here, to the map, 334% increase in the house. So if this is elevated, that's minus because I'm familiar with the level that we're at, we're at 8015, you would bring that house up to 8015 and then on top of that, you would have a house that's shy of 2,800 square feet. So to me, that seems like a lot of house on this footprint. So that's one question for this. This I'm not so concerned about as an matter because it's staying pretty much on the same footprint. But when we get to the back house, I'll have additional comments. But that would just certainly be the math on this particular plot, you're squeezing an enormous house onto a very small parcel of land.
Well, respectfully, I wouldn't say it's an enormous house, I would say it's a larger house, but you're in a neighborhood of much larger houses and there's a lot...
Bigger lots.
And there's a lot of land versus houses that are that size or larger in an area, say, like Cedar Point or Lighthouse Point.
Right, are you all together with three stories? Right, so that's what I was going to say, is that there aren't, are there, did you say there are no barns?
We do not have, we do not have renderings.
So...
But that's what the building code allows.
Okay, right, but it just seems like that is almost going to be four-story side because by the time you bring, there's also no, I don't know what you call it, the grade, sort of, like I was talking about 15 and 17 is the point, but what you're actually at here now, it looks like maybe five or six. So how high would your foundation have to come off the ground level for it to get to 17?
Correct me if I'm wrong, there'll be no foundation. It'll be on pylons?
No, this one will have concrete foundation with floodways.
With, with breakaway dams?
Yeah.
Currently, the first floor elevation is 12.9 and we're going up to 60, so the first floor will be up on the 3D.
Okay.
And the code, chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, allows the count to start at the first floor elevation?
Yep.
Yes?
I wasn't sure about that, I was trying to find that information. I thought it was the finished grade, which would be...
Average finished grade, perimeter, around the foundation, but the house will not, I would not allow the house to be in violation.
So it would not be 35 feet starting at the new elevated level? It would be 35 feet from the ground to the top of the roof?
Again, the home is going to comply with the Situate zoning by law in terms of the lighting requirement. They're not seeking a variance to have a house that is taller.
Right, right.
So it will comply, as yours will next door.
Right, and it does, yeah. So from my ground to my roof is about less than 25. So that's why I was trying to figure out the math on this, that whether it was, once you stepped over the front door, so you're just saying that it would not go above 35 from the ground?
Right. The average is halfway between the eaves and the ridge. The actual maximum height in the very top of the ridge is 40.
Okay, so it's like the top of the second, whatever the top of the...
Yeah, you're measuring towards, like this, you're measuring to halfway up.
Right.
But the floor is on a two-and-a-half story building, so car would be adding, would that would add space?
Because if you remember at, at client hearing that they did question about the percentage of the increase of the house, they were, Tom Situate was interested in trying to not have such a large percentage. And credit, these are smaller square footage percentages, but 334% seems, seems a big number.
Did you check the math? I did check the math. Is that correct? Yes, it is.
So I'll wait to...
I think you raised a question, where will the cars for this home park? In tennis court or how do they answer? Would you like to answer my question?
They really have two options, they can park in the existing area or they can park in the new area you're creating.
The new area you're creating, which would involve somewhat separate curb cut or lack thereof on a lot that already doesn't have sufficient frontage?
Yes?
Do we have any thoughts on that?
We have, we have a conservation also, so at that point we're looking to eliminate more of it if it works and we'll get a little closer.
Right.
You have to make sure it's wide enough to actually sufficiently access the car.
So there isn't, so they would not be parking the cars behind the home or driving around the back of the home to park there?
I think it'd be true because that side drive would be very narrow there, so...
And just, you know, you can't, although there are two different applications, I don't think you can do the first application on looking at the second. When you look at this, right, this is the next one, this is all squishy.
Yep, yep.
So Concom is going to, and this house is right at the, you know, right at the limit of the front, so unless they helicopter into this house, they're driving over here.
Yep.
So then you get back to the current application and unless they're going to share the driveway?
Well, but they can't really, is my, is my point. Is that, it looks to me, and to be honest, I'm, I'm not sure the code even addresses this, but it looks like this application involves, but maybe, where do the, where do the cars for this home currently park? Are they all on?
So the cars currently park to the left of the whole house and just stand down.
They do. We're not, we're not impacting that. We're not impacting that.
They park behind.
Okay.
We're not impacting that in any way, we're only adding some additional areas.
Right, and I'm not, I'm not necessarily asking because they're wet, I'm just trying to, we have a lot which is small and I just want to understand that we're also considering a new parking area that will be entering and exiting the property at a different point on Bailey's Causeway. It sounds like maybe we are, but it sounds like maybe we're not.
I think maybe by moving the driveway, I think that's more of a benefit than trying to keep the old driveway.
And if it's a priority for both houses to park in that area?
Well, I think it's, the way that you have it now, the way that the parking is now is you come into the left of the first house and then whoever lives in the first house parks kind of diagonally behind the house and then the other two go back, the other cars go back to the rear house. I mean, that's essentially achievable, I think, if you put the driveway on the left, you pull to the right of the house, it's two spots there and somebody can go to the rear of the house. I just think it, it just gets the driveway away from that water and that tide most times.
Right.
Except if that's a mounted system here, how high is the mountain?
If we did look at that one for designing the septic to make sure the slope coming off of the east side, is it too steep to drive on?
I know.
Yeah, I think Jeff, if I knew when I was making this presentation to the Concom, I'd want to tell them I was eliminating the driveway that goes, I mean, that's something you put, that's a non-disturbance zone. So yeah, we're getting, we're going to be out of the non-disturbance zone and we're going to relocate the driveway with only a single curb cut into what's called the buffer zone, which is between the 50 and 100 foot setback. So you're going to have one curb cut and access to the two dwellings on the right side of 36 Bailey's Causeway. I personally, I feel much more comfortable making, or you know, approving this or looking at this, that being the case, because I just think it's a better, it's a better plan for you, it's a better plan in terms of safety because you've got one curb cut today, you'll have one curb cut tomorrow. That single curb cut services both dwellings today and will tomorrow. You know, I've been by the property, you know, around the holidays when people are parking everywhere and you know, people park, can park across the street also, but, but I think just one curb would be better and then you approve however you would propose to do it that would pass muster with Concom, the ability to park on that, that area to access the, both the back dwelling and the other dwelling. And there are ways that it can be screened and everything, and there are ways to make it attractive, but that gets this driveway out of this, this, this essentially no man's land.
Yeah, I think conservation would be like that, especially in the plant in the area. So we haven't presented that to them yet, we have to go for a few more.
To be honest, for me, I don't love the idea of voting and to be honest, I think that I would vote that this house is allowed to be raised and reconstructed in this manner, but I don't love the idea of issuing that based on a plan that shows a driveway for this home on this application, when I know that really the right-hand side of the home is going to be used as the driveway for the home.
So you want to see the driveway in this plan?
I think I would, especially on a lot that's short on frontage and with, I think it's, I think that's important to our decision.
Yeah, I wish I brought the plan prior to the board of health and that's going to happen in conservation because it actually shows all that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not typically a stickler for plans, but I feel like that's pertinent to our decision.
I really wish I had that one in the sentence.
I have a question about over...
I'm sorry, ma'am, just, just so it's not everybody, we're definitely going to get to another question.
So I just, I really wish I had brought that other plan, because it shows the grade angle of the septic and it shows the driveways. Usually this Joe only zoning on the plan in those terms.
Sure, Jeff, I assume that you would have some sort of screening between, between that and the driveway for the back house and the front property?
Along this property line and probably this property line as well.
Well, but screening so that the headlights as you turn it into the driveway to go to the back house aren't shining into the, well, I suppose if it's, if the house is elevated, it's not going to shine into that house.
So it begs another question for me, and before we have this applicant go back and show us a plan with two driveways and spend more money and spend more time, if we're, so are we talking about one shared driveway going up the right-hand side, or we're talking about maintaining the left-hand driveway and adding the driveway to the right-hand side to the front home?
We're talking about adding it, knowing that conservation might ask us to eliminate that driveway, so we could do that if they...
To be honest, for me, adding a second driveway here, and I don't take my...
Is this a dead end going down to... To Bailey's Causeway?
Yeah, I, I don't think I can completely ignore, at least the idea that that might be a little bit more of a detriment, we're putting in, I guess it's no more traffic. I don't, yeah, I want to understand that as part of the application.
I agree.
I'm not sure I have a problem with two versus one. I think, you know, now there's two, maybe that's a negative, but if they're not shared anymore, that's a positive. But I think that plays into our decision and I think it should be on the plan that we reference in our decision.
That's fair, I think we can come up with that and I'd want to commit to eliminating the driveway.
Yeah, I'm certainly not asking you.
Without talking to the property owner.
Yep, of course. Yeah, I just think that that, that should be reflected in our decision, because lots this small, front, back, two houses, concurrent applications, I think that if someone came and complained about something that they, like that, that they didn't see on the plan that we approved a special permit for or made a finding on, I, I think that they'd have a good point.
Janie, you said you had some questions about the back lot?
Well, actually, I just have a question about here, is this, as I indicated, this area is, is very wet, like you know, right now, you would not walk on this area. And so when you're, I don't know what's involved in putting a driveway, so I'm just making that point, but I don't know what it would take, but that would be a good wet area. So I don't know if you just, you could gravel there and then that's good and the car can be fine on that or...
Is it that much more wet than the other cell towers?
Uh, yes, it is.
Well, they're going to raise it up three feet?
The whole, the whole surface? The whole, they're going to...
I have three feet on the right-hand side only where the septic is going.
Okay.
That hill will be able to scrape off the tall soil down in the sand and then build up the sand.
Okay, so it would be the septic, so it would be this whole side would be three feet higher? Okay, I don't know if it's involved in the, the wet, so...
Not huge. No, it's, it's good two-minute...
The amount of lot that I did use in trying to keep with the neighborhood. And when I did elevate the house, I have the full first floor. And when I went to the second floor, did not make it a full second floor. So that I tapered the whole structure so that it was not like a looming tower. My concern now is that this will completely block... My house was designed without air conditioning. It was designed with window placement to harness the air with the elevation. So that now this entire property, this entire structure, I should say, will block the air and the light from not only my ground floor, but my second, my first floor of living, but also my second floor of living. So that now whenever I look out to the east, I will only see the side of the building. And I will not have sunlight or the air that I was anticipating. I'm not really sure, moving this out of the wetland and placing it here and increasing it by such a large size, I'm not sure how that assists the marshland. Also not sure how it...
They're not moving it out of the wetland because it's not in the wetland. They're moving it further from the buffer zone. That's that, they're moving it further from that blue line.
Okay, so it's not technically in the marsh?
Correct.
According to the zone, to the mark.
And to be clear, their, um, that is not here, but their objective is not to assist the marsh or the wetland or the buffer. Their objective is to build a bigger home.
Right, and so I'm not sure why it couldn't actually stay there where it is and increase the size at that location.
Well...
Either by staying on that footprint and then just coming forward, increasing the size of that footprint.
This is where they'd like to put it and this is where they're asking us to approve and as to the location on the lot. For me, I see a home within the building.
Right. And again, I point out, this house is 612% increase. And I do recall my hearing before the board questioning the increase in the size of my home.
And again, you're dealing with, the home is the size of a shit.
And I have no objection to what...
390 square feet, so, I mean, I can't imagine there is much of a market for people looking for 390 square feet houses.
Oh great, oh no, I didn't say that I didn't expect that they would increase it in height or in width, but it's just moving it forward. And I wasn't really able to see here when we were talking about the septic systems because that was my question. I didn't see where you said the septic was going to go on this property.
The septic for this property is actually a more appropriate...
Is that allowed? Having it on a different property?
Yes. It's actually, they're both these properties.
But even when they separate, they're gonna have to deal with each other.
Okay.
There's a lot, but... You're not pleased with where this property owner has planned to put their home?
Right.
Because it is inconvenient for you and...
That's a little bit more than inconvenient.
It's borderline disastrous for you. And I don't disagree. And I would be very upset if this is where my neighbor was putting my home when I made the plans that you made. But I think I'd be just as upset if my neighbor got a vote in where I was able to put my home because they didn't want it where I wanted to put it.
And out of consideration for all of my neighbors, I made sure that I stayed within a respectable area so that I was not interfering with any of these homes.
Is, I, I did not mean to imply that their true choice of location was as considerate as yours. It very well may not be. But we don't get to rule on the consideration that app can show in their placement.
Uh, so, well, that was mainly my point was the, I'm objecting to where it's being placed on the lot because I'm not sure what he's sort of getting by moving the house. It won't flood less.
For, for me, he, he or she doesn't have to get anything. They can merely desire to put it there. And I get a vote as a member of this board as to whether or not that is substantially more detrimental in the guise of the zoning code. But substantially more detrimental to the placement of a neighbor's home and their view and their air? Well, I certainly could see you having a strong opinion about that. I would too. I don't feel that I get to vote one way or another based on it.
So in addition to this house now being placed directly behind me, we've now invited the driveway also to be on this side as well. So that this whole side will have the septic and the driveway and this house.
I agree, not. Great for your lot. I, I am sorry. If we, we, one of our fellow board members who is not here tonight has what sometimes is referred to as a negative easement, property rights in a butter's lot to prevent them from doing something like this. But that is an easement that he or one of his predecessor owners paid for.
Right, no, I wish no ill will on this property. I'm just trying to make sure that the setbacks are respected because I just feel like this 13.5, the way I was viewing it, but obviously I'm wrong, that I was hoping that that would at least be, have to go back to 20 because I was viewing that as the backyard.
The setback's actually eight. That's how far he's actually 13.5 off. So he's five and a half feet back from the setback. All of the setbacks are that. In fact, the lot bigger than it should, has to be. The only reason that this is here is because, one, they're in frontage, and two, they're two feet short of the lot. So it complies with everything else except for the fact the lot was created, you know, years ago.
To be honest. This, this lot would have a variance argument if, if there was no house on it. Yeah. Argument, that's a more complicated review standard. But, um, yeah, I, I, you will talk to the applicant by all means. They want to move it around and you guys figure it out. That's wonderful, but we love to see that, but...
What about the flooding issue that doesn't come up in this area? The conservation.
It could come up, but you, can you be a little bit more specific?
Well, my house, I have 50 years as a summer house. And I'm selling my other house and I'm moving down to the beach house permanently. And I, all I can say is the flooding is just progressively worse each, each year it seems. And I, I just would consider that a safety issue.
This is storm surge, man, you're a primitive?
Doesn't come up as far as any storm, any high tide, or any rain.
Right.
And it sits there. But like, if you were near the house, it could be waist-high.
Sure.
And I just wonder how much fill we take to alleviate that. That, that's been the biggest flaw.
So you mean that? I'm sorry, I don't understand your comment as to the fill.
In other words, will this three feet of fill that's going in this property alleviate the fact that there's sometimes 45 feet of water across the property?
No, when, when the ocean wants to come, the ocean's gonna come.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know he's an expert, but...
In the last, I would say, last two or three, probably four years, I've seen three cars destroyed.
Sure, yeah, no, if they raise the ground up three feet, when there's less than three feet of water that comes in, they might be dry.
Right.
And when they're more than three feet, they'll just be three feet, feet less wet. When this property closes, you'll see on the horizon.
Right. I don't think any, I don't think anything that they propose to do is going to impact the flooding one way or the other. If anything, it'll improve the situation by getting the homes out of the flood plain.
Getting the first floor?
Getting the first floor, getting the living area out of the flood plain.
Well, there's less people, there'll be one less home whose first floor of living space will be flooded, which is presumably less taxing on our emergency services. That's the possibility, and the... I, for, for me, I think, I want to say that I think we can rule on this application even with the question about the driveway on the front application. But, is anybody disagree?
I have a question on that one, Jim.
What's that?
You wanted the other one?
Yeah, so I would be okay with ruling on this application with the requirement that they resubmit the plan with a confirmation of the upper area. If it's, I mean, it's roughly 50% of the lot, probably about 44% of the lot. I don't think that number being below or over a certain amount is going to affect how I feel about the application. That's for me. I think that wherever the driveway, whether there's two on the front application and the left one stays where it is to service this house, whether they both come in on the right side of the front house, I think the gravel drive area on this lot is still going to stay relatively the same. They're not going to park the cars with this house on the right hand side. So I feel comfortable voting on this.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we grant the relief sought by the applicant under 470.6. That the, an issue that, of the issue of special permit slash finding of the proposed raising and reconstructing of the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling in 36 R Ales Causeway will not, uh, be consistent with the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program, consistent with the provisions of State Building Code, and the improvements shall not affect the natural drainage patterns of the water course, and that the proposed raising and reconstructing will not be more substantially detrimental to the existing neighborhood than the current pre-existing non-conforming restructuring of the property.
Second? All those in favor? Aye. Uh, so, I'm sorry, with, with the condition, we'd like to resubmit the plan with that upper area, so it's not going to be a parking lot.
And next is, uh...
All right. Okay. We have called John Murphy. Check on where our fifth applicant is. I'm going to take that decision. Yeah, is that all right with you?
Oh, right.
Yeah, that's okay? You want to look at that, I thought maybe you didn't make my decision?
Yes, no, I'm sure, I'm so worried about this.
Oh, all right, I'll give you a minute.
Yep, thank you.
No problem.
Can we get John to get the roof and do that at the library?
Well, I, I mean, I...
It's a long time.
Reminded him, I, he begged us to promote the agenda, so I thought he'd be very excited to be here.
I don't have any problem with that, Mr. Murphy. Something's not right.
I know. Well, maybe something's not on fire right now.
It's not, it's only quiet at present.
Is that the application you folks are here for?
No, was the second one heard or was it those?
The first two applications were continued, I apologize.
I was late, I was late.
You, you're very polite for not interrupting, I apologize.
I was late.
Yes, that was continued until our next meeting, which is May 19th, I think?
Thank you.
Of course.
The, the engineer and surveyor could not be here to make the presentation.
It's my birthday, so I'm delighted.
Well, have you heard that? Get some meat?
I'm sorry, no, this is good, this is good.
All right.
Get some cake.
Sir, what about you? Yeah, involved with the fire. Oh, okay, we're gonna see where you track them down.
The old guy says, I've got a cell phone, my phone, they're going to our private area.
Maybe we should continue?
No, he can't be here, that's why.
Is there anyone else who can present?
No questions. Um, I'm checking to see if that time log I'm seeing. I'm, I'm texting.
What's the non-emergency number for the fire department?
What do I get? Go to the...
Oh, what's the name? Yeah, I got somebody that's working for it.
You know somebody?
It's there.
You got a guy?
Got a guy, knows a guy. Five four five, seven four eight, is that kind of them? When they freak out, like, oh, that's, that's the, probably the public's in there.
Right.
Oh, Kansas City, just showed the town hall, she said it into eleven.
Look at that, Tommy! All right, we're gonna take, so the video doesn't run, we're gonna take a short recess while we wait for our fifth application to show up. Only two of us are gonna vote on that. Yeah? Well, Tommy's not here.
Okay, that's...
Yeah, there you go. Shut that up.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna come back in a session, our fifth applicant is here. Just to confirm, we have our fifth application. The town of Situate requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL 48, section six, and section 470.6 and 810.2 of the Situate zoning bylaw, and other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to raise and reconstruct the pre-existing fire station at Four River Street in Hummerock, assessment map 72 block 17, parcel A.
Representing the town of Situate this evening is Chief Murphy.
Good evening, sorry to be late.
All right, thank you for your time.
So I'll sit for a little bit, I think we'll do, it's two phases of this project. The first phase is actually getting underway now. We actually met this morning with Murray Jacko, P M.
Sorry, Chief, could we just spread out the plans? I haven't seen any yet. I think it'll be useful to hear what you have to say while we're looking at the plans.
Packet of small ones, if you don't want the big ones.
A packet of a small one would be fantastic.
All right. Great stories. Picture turf wars.
Sorry, we have a plan of where, can you sit on the ground now and will sit on the ground in the future?
Yes.
Fantastic.
The site plan. So the first, the first drawing is, I'm curious, a block alone, is the sketch of the, what the whole of this building's gonna look like. And then on the site plan, it's one of the little small, but you can see on the site plan, the whole building is no longer the crossed lines.
Okay.
And then the perimeter, that looks like a square box, almost same, the north and the east walls are almost the same, but you can see it's further back to the west and to the south. It's 24 by 48, 24 foot by 48 foot footprint of the new building. It's a raised that one height. Currently, the old building was built in 1941. It's in very tough shape. It's, uh, last January, in March, we had a water acre underneath the floorboards. So what's once we thought might be a renovation, we know to get future resiliency, we had to do more than that. And I tell you, the 250 grand went by. So we have, um, tell me the appropriate money to, uh, another 275,000. We also received a $100,000 grant from the Fire Services toward the project. We've been through, uh, all the other committees, planning board approved, you'll see it, and also the review from the, uh, the review from the engineer of the height, shows maybe by conservation to basically make sure the site plan is not ruined.
That's Merrill?
Yes, Merrill is the company that was hired to check the balance of the power that Paul M. gave us during, uh, your check stuff. It's work. Yeah, I was hoping not to let it into what it is. So the proposal is, right now, the way that building is basically, uh, it's in real tough shape. It's, it's right in the middle of the flood zone. It's had flooding twice. There was another three-foot higher, we had to close the station out. And the sensitive renovations got in the place, so we were that close. Fortunately, uh, we was paid by that by going forward. We know that the storm's gonna come again. So the only solution here is two phases. The first phase is you see to the, to the solvency project is an apparatus bay. That was approved, and we are actually doing every pin to this building to make a resilient as well. We're bounding up two feet on the property, so the apparatus bay floor will be two feet higher than this down. Trying to get some resilience. We're running a three-foot foundation wall above that. It will be a metal build, foundation of metalwork building on top of the foundation. So the foundation of the building, the actual bottom of the building itself, will be the same height as the top of the height as the new building. So we want it to be symmetrical. We also, both buildings will basically be, um, the flood plain goes up. So that's why we're buying the building up, we'll put the three-foot wall, building this deal on top of that. If we had a bad, bad flood, we got three feet of water, we'd come in the apparatus bay by a foot, we'd go back up. So building resilience, you know, we don't have to with apparatus bay for long term. That's how we're gonna approach that. We hope to have that out to bid. And then week two, and hopefully the first week of May, we'll be open to business trying to get that done, starting side work with your, on the apparatus bay. So we have a type of flood plain as phase two. Phase two of this has been funded. Improvement of various boards of, where I'm here tonight, for the flood plain special permit. We are raising the, uh, the new building of the pilots and the proposed, uh, height is, uh, being higher than 13.1, we're gonna go to 14.2. Quiet. It's gonna be basically 24 by 48 foot prefab. The reason to do a prefab, there's a lot less downtime for my power down here. So we're doing the building, the apparatus bay first, where I have a place to house the truck. And my plan is to put some type of camera the second day, so they can actually function out of there, probably for the 68 weeks it takes for a prefab to be fully transitioned over to a functional building.
Okay.
And we're gonna marry those two buildings together, then the door, same height, on the left side, except for everything. So when they come together, they're gonna merge together, the doorway there, so it's gonna hopefully look like they're building up.
All right, I, you have more? Sorry.
And you can see that just the various filtration systems require their conservation. Two filtration systems, a tight tank. The reason we raise that apparatus bay is two feet, so we can still maintain the slope of 5% going up through the street. That was the reason we went as high as we could, to maintain that. So basically, it's a two-foot prefab, but now it's a shia. Will you have, uh, will you be on the generator? We have a generator, so if you look at the apparatus bay, from the very back, there's some small blocks in the back, there's a generator, the budget for a generator, and that'll have to raise up as well.
Oh, I see there. What is non-conforming about the, the site plan?
Uh, setbacks from Harvard. I think this is, is the only non-conforming.
That's actually improved by a foot, of what's there now.
All right.
So that's gonna actually improve, so it won't hurt around. That's the only setback that, that's gonna improve. And on this building, the front, back setbacks are fine. The south building, uh, it's built 27 feet on the south of the apparatus bay.
And the apparatus bay will not need a height variance, correct?
But we'll get it approved.
And this lot is plenty large, the use doesn't need relief. So it's the flood plain and the setback that you were here for relief for. Is that correct? And the, the reason I'm saying that and asking, it seems pretty apparent from what we're looking at, just because we didn't have some plans in advance. Typically, we have a plan that will give us the chart and everything. And so I just wanna, that seems very clear to me. All right, that's just what I wanted to get out there, but, Tom?
The Harvard's, are they considered a side setback or front setback?
No, that would be a front setback.
So three, three fronts and a rear here, right?
Yeah, basically, uh, the front's four, it could be, it's about just 27, 28. It was 11 and a half, 11 and a half.
When do you plan to start construction?
So the apparatus bay, I hope to have this thing done by July first. The apparatus bay, I'll still have to get the electrical. What I want to do is create that construction, it's gonna take three or four months. I'm hoping to get this out by the end of June. My goal is to have this thing done by the first, by Christmas. I was thinking Thanksgiving, but, Thanksgiving's taking more time than I realized. So that's the goal, so try to get this done before it's too cold, get the next storm. But the, uh, the apparatus bay, we should be on it in, by July first. And this building depends on all the paper construction, once it's about to bid. You know, if you don't obviously get inside, ship to the site, and how long it takes to transfer it over to a functional building.
I have no questions.
Bobby, you got anything else?
No. Paul and I worked closely on this, Paul, with a great opportunity on this project.
Sure. Sir, just your, your name and your address first, for the record, if you could.
Daniel, I'll be required. Full set to Lavenir, full generation in Hummerock. My girl, my first one in Hummerock, 1986. Well done.
Did, are you just here in support of the application, or?
I am, 100%. We're able to support.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, that's great, I wish, I wish we had more of that.
They've done a wonderful job representing the fire station from, uh, 1941. All over on Webster Street.
All right.
Sure, move to grant the relief sought by the applicant under conditions of the bylaw, section 470.6 and 810.2, for a special permit for the improvement of the existing structures at the property location of Four River Street in Hummerock. And the board finds, specifically finds that the improvements are consistent with the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program, that the improvements will be consistent with Massachusetts State Building Code, and that the improvements will not affect the natural drainage patterns of the water course, and that the reconstruction of the firehouse structure will actually reduce pre-existing non-conformity in the front yard setbacks set up from Harvard Street. Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Congratulations.
Go back.
Rules are up on the...
What's that?
Rules are up on the...
Go ahead, Ray. Oh, Jesus, I didn't even check. We're, we're still gonna roll for one minute.
Minutes?
We have minutes, we have, what was that? And we're in... Here we are. Oh, what's important, man? All right. We have a motion to, hi there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Mr. Clark, so anything?
I'm gonna tell you, settle this. My son lives in the former house, which is in Hummerock, five about, so...
No kidding?
My daughter's came down and that and interviewed her son.
Oh, that's great.
Yes, but, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll stay to put even for you. You take it? Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless.
God bless him. The winning of a motion to approve...
Have a nice weekend.
As circulated by suit for December, January, and February.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye. Move to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.